All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board Meeting of June 15th, 2020. Once again, we are remote. And this meeting is being recorded to play on Norwood Public Access at a later time. First order of business at seven o'clock is approval of the minutes from 6:12.
Mr. Chairman, if no one else has any objection, I ask that we accept them as filed?
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, all now, I've got a vote by roll call because we are remote. So Brian?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was in a lousy connection.
Brian's on the move.
I'm on the move and I will stop after.
All right.
So do we have a reorganization as the first thing on the agenda?
Not yet. Brian, while you're on the move, we're voting to approve the minutes.
Oh.
We have a motion. How's your vote?
Aye.
All right, good. Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And Chairman votes aye. Thank you. Five zero approval of the minutes. The next order of business is the Planning Board reorganization. And before we do that, I just want to congratulate Brian and Rob on their tremendous victories. It was a nail biter. And congratulations. Yep, Brian's on the move again.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, I'm on the move.
We're getting the whole tour of the house, Brian. I love what you've done.
Internet connection.
Did you do the curtains, Brian, or did?
I'll turn it to you in case. Second one up.
Joe, you look like hefty acid in there. All right, so the next order of business is Planning Board reorganization. Elections are over and this is the time of year when we do that. So we're going to entertain nominations for the positions of Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Clerk. Do I, anybody would like to nominate anyone?
I'd like to nominate Al Porro to be Chairman this year.
All right. Is there any other nominations for the position of Chairman? Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations for position of Chairman? Seeing none, we'll close that. All those in favor of Al Porro as Chairman for the upcoming years, say aye, or go around the room. Brian?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And Chairman, the former Chairman votes aye. Thank you very much. Al, you're going to be the new Chairman. I'll just finish the reorganization and then you can take over. Next one is Vice Chair. Is there any nominee?
I'd like to nominate Joseph.
For Vice Chairman. Okay, we have Joseph Sheehan is nominated for Vice Chair.
Okay.
A second on that? Thank you. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Brian?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Al?
Chairman votes aye.
And I vote aye. The last position is nominations for Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Robert Bamber as Clerk.
Second?
Is there a second? Okay, any other nominations for Clerk? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Brian?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Five zero for Rob as Clerk. So the new Planning Board would be Al Porro Chairman, Joseph Sheehan Vice Chair, and Rob Bamber Clerk. I'd like to, you know, appreciate all the help everyone gave me the last year, two years, and Al, it's all yours, brother. Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, 705, time has come. And it's the Route One Study and Rezoning Initiative with our consultant Ted Brobets. Going to give us an update on that. Ted, if you're ready, sir?
Yeah, thanks, Al. Let the screen here so you can see the how this works. Can everyone see the screen? The PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Hold on. Nice. We're gonna, oh, I moved these boxes so I can, let's see. Unfortunately, my, part of my screen is blocked here, so I'm trying to figure out how to. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And something that we started last year actually, but had been really working on the last four months. We started out with doing interviews with public officials, property owners, and business owners on Route One. Basically, anybody else who wanted to talk to us and give us their thoughts on the future of the corridor. And then we started working on the plan itself. And the plan is broken down into five different sections. The first section is introduction. And introduction, we're simply identifying, well, that's the goals and objectives of the initiative, which is, the goal is to basically create a sustainable future and reinvestment plan that benefits residents, business owners, property owners, workers, and visitors to Norwood. That's the long-term plan. And this plan is a long-term plan. Some of the specific objectives that we are integrating into the plan is, you know, get a good understanding of existing conditions and trends, create a clear vision for the future, both a written vision as well as a conceptual vision for Route One. Identify key auto industry trends that could potentially impact future development and future dealerships and existing dealerships. Identify mobility issues, you know, traffic fluctuation, pedestrian access, bus access, and so on. Make recommendations in terms of aesthetics, streetscapes, and landscapes, and other site planning criteria for reinvestment. Incorporate smart growth and sustainable design into future regulations. And try to work on some branding and marketing ideas that the auto dealerships can work together on. They've had previous initiatives for advertising mostly, but we have never collectively worked on any kind of overall strategy to sort of, you know, improve the view of the corridor, the public perception of the corridor. And then the final part is to put together a series of new zoning regulations and standards that reflect these goals and objectives. And you can see here on the right side, the, what we've looked at in terms of Norwood's proximity to the 128 corridor or the 95 corridor, Boston, and, you know, basically where we sit in the regional market. And all those other circles that are identifying area villages and downtown centers, shopping centers, industrial parks, and malls. So we are amongst many, many other well-established market entities in the metro area. So we looked carefully and, you know, extensively at property characteristics and trends. And the map you see over to the right is basically breaking down the corridor into segments and sort of, you know, key areas. So you can see up at the top, we've got the university area, the Everett Street area. Then we've got a large area that's owned by the town, this mostly open space. Then we get into sort of the main part of the corridor where the car dealerships start, you know, leading down into some more industrial and manufacturing areas on the south end of the corridor. Till we get to Southern Street and that area down south through the Walpole Line. So, you know, all in all, basically, there's 120 parcels that front directly on Route One. But the overall area, the project area, areas in and around the corridor include 475 properties. So it's a, this is a, we're taking, it's a large corridor. The focus obviously is really what's on Route One itself, but the area of influence, as we call the rest of the project area, really has an important role in the future of the success of the corridor itself. So we did a lot of analysis of current land use in terms of, you know, certain characteristics, the parcel sizes, the setbacks, the floor ratios, and also the tax impact of different types of land uses. And you can see that on the left side, upper left side, you know, the median tax receipts on an annual basis for different sectors, different land uses along the corridor. And auto industry obviously is the biggest. You know, it's 21 parcels. It covers, you know, over 17% of all property along the corridor, actually has a fairly low impact tax-wise on Norwood. Or basically, you know, relatively speaking, the amount of money that's generated by auto industries, auto dealerships anyways, is low compared to other sectors such as life science and hotels. And that's not just to say that it's not important, but the difference really is that the use of the land for auto dealerships is primarily parking lots. So where the buildings are high quality and high value, property is relatively low compared to some of the other things that are out there, including hotels. And as far as hotels go, most of those hotels are fairly new, so their property values are substantial, as are the tax receipts on a yearly basis. We also look at other things such as the approved vehicle storage facilities in and around the corridor. As you probably all know, that's part of our scope is to look at, you know, other changes we could make to the regulations to better manage those over time. There's quite a few of them, and there are a total of 3,000 cars that are basically permitted to be in and around the corridor in these facilities. It's an important thing. I mean, the value of these properties is fairly low, but they consume a lot of land. And in some cases, these are, you know, really, you know, critical pieces of land that could be used otherwise for things like life science, R and D, or other commercial uses. We looked at mobility, you know, the conditions of, you know, the roadways, traffic congestion, opportunities for alternative transportation such as bike and pedestrian facilities, the bus up and down Washington, 1A anyways. And basically, the corridor clearly is made for traffic and automobiles. And the pedestrian facilities and bike facilities are pretty minimal. And there's no bus corridor on the corridor, there's no bus service directly on the corridor itself, which is kind of an issue. We've got, I mean, the good thing is that we have commuter close by that goes through the downtown area on Washington Street, but the connections between downtown and the corridor are not particularly good in most locations. So it's hard to get from the train stations over to the corridor, at least on foot or by bike. We looked at open spaces. There's actually a lot of open spaces anywhere around the corridor, both publicly owned and privately owned. And the open space recreation plan that was recently updated has, you know, a really comprehensive inventory of those properties, what their potential recreation, what their recreation potential was, potential funding uses, funding sources for future improvements, and sort of their ranking in terms of priority in the community. So a lot of those fall into our project area in Route One. In terms of market trends and conditions, you know, this is a manufacturing town. It was sort of at its peak in the 60s and 70s. The population sort of went downward for about 30 years till we got to 2,000. And then it's starting to project further back, you know, going back upwards to a point where, you know, there's a projection of 30,000 people in 2040. Some other things that, you know, we need to be aware of is that the size of the typical household in Norwood is going down while the age is going up. And in terms of employment, manufacturing is still, you know, a major part of our, you know, our industrial sector in terms of wages and in terms of employment. But wholesale is also growing as is information and technology. So there's starting to be sort of an evolution towards more information, more technology that's becoming more prevalent in Norwood. We looked at other market studies and analysis along the 128 corridor and sort of summarized what we found. And by and large, in terms of residential, specifically in terms of rental apartments, there's a very strong demand for younger, younger folks, people that are just starting out professionally, people in small households that are really looking for something close to work and convenient and easy to get to. And in addition to younger folks, there's a lot of older folks that are looking to downsize, coming, maybe coming out of a four-bedroom home, looking to get into something easier and quicker and, you know, less, you know, less responsibilities in terms of maintenance. But also in close proximity to other amenities, whether it's open space or services or restaurants and retail. We're also seeing, you know, other sort of types of households, divorces is something that's, that's looking for these types of smaller units, multifamily units, mostly one and two bedrooms. And a lot of these, these projects are going in and around the 128 corridor are fairly small. I mean, from studios that are only 400 square feet to two bedrooms primarily, which are 800 to 1,200 square feet with one parking, one parking, with one car. Now, we're finding in studies that were done by MAPC that these new residential projects that are going along the 128 corridor really are not requiring a lot of parking because in most cases, we're so close to other sources of transportation, whether it's commuter rail, whether it's the bus service, or whether it's just a couple that's sharing a car, that has one car, or using ride-sharing services. So I was kind of surprised to see the results of the MAPC study last year when they, they showed a lot of a lot of reduction in the parking demands for these units. Same situation with condos. There's a strong market for condos, about younger startup homeowners as well as people looking to downsize. There, you know, the, you can see that the stats there on the right, a lot of these are small units as well. Parking ratios are one to two per unit, a little bit higher than you get for apartments. And the adoption rate is pretty high. So just basically, what this is saying is, is a real pent-up demand for smaller residential units in and around the metro area. Especially in close proximity to, you know, major highways and buses as well as commuter rail. The final piece of the market analysis was, you know, what's happening with office and R and D and life science? And it's really, you know, it's really expanding up and down the 128 corridor. That's nothing new, but it's been almost like red hot the last 10 years. And what's happening is that a lot of established companies in Boston are getting pushed out of Cambridge and, you know, Seaport because it's becoming so expensive. And there's also a lot of startups that are really looking for, you know, inexpensive, relatively inexpensive space that's close by, not necessarily in Boston or Cambridge, but, you know, within the 128 corridor. That presents a good opportunity for places like Norwood, which are, you know, tied in by major highways and commuter rail and bus service, and not far at all from Boston, to take advantage of that opportunity. So in summary, the market basically, you know, Norwood has got a good opportunity, but also is competing with a lot of other, parks and communities on the Route One and 128 corridors that have already established, you know, some zoning that allows for some mixed use and residential as well as life science and biotech and those sorts of things. Where it's got to be, you know, engaging and interesting for people to invest in it. We heard a lot of that kind of sentiment from our interviews. And many of these are fairly limited today. There's really not much going on out there as far as memories for workers or for residents, although it's got good potential for both. There's a, we need to be able to accommodate internal growth, you know, businesses that are already established in town but are looking to expand. We may, based on some of the interviews we did, may lose opportunities because these, you know, key property owners are tied into long-term leases where they might want to get out of those leases, but they are obligated for a number of years. They may miss those market opportunities. And, you know, we need to sort of establish an identity. We need a brand for Route One, you know, looking forward so that the perception is more than just the automobile. Sure, you know, obviously, we talked a little bit about the mobility issues. Employees feel somewhat isolated because everything is sort of spread out and there's not a lot of pedestrian connections between different parts of the corridor. In terms of lands, vans constraints and zoning constraints. We do have a fair amount of wetland and floodplains out there. Scepter parking is something that we don't see any of in Norwood yet. And also, there's been sort of a free opposition to residential mixed-use development on the corridor itself. If you look at the right side of the slide, you'll see that the auto industry between 1978 and 2019 has really been up and down and up and down. It had been on a trend upwards between 2010 and 2015 or so. But over the last couple of years, just sort of trending downward again. These are in terms of sales of new automobiles. So it's really sort of hard to tell where the auto industry is going to go. But obviously, there's a lot of things influencing that, you know, in terms of, you know, alternative cars, types of cars to improve public, sort of, public transportation. And younger people are not driving as much or even having a car. So it'll be interesting to see how that progresses. The third part of the vision plan is looking at the current regulations. You're a Planning Board member, so you're very, we're very aware of the current regulations, so we won't spend a lot of time on this. But just sort of breaking down the corridor in terms of what's zoned for highway business, manufacturing, limited manufacturing. Those are the three key zoning districts on Route One. But predominantly, it's really sort of limited manufacturing. The upper part of the corridor has some highway business, but most of it is actually either manufacturing or light or limited manufacturing up and down the corridor. So it makes, even though it appears as you're driving up and down, to be sort of uniform in terms of the land uses, the zoning is quite different in different parts of it. So. And in terms of the dimensional standards, they're fairly restrictive. You know, the highway business is a half an acre, limited business manufacturing is three acres with 250 feet of frontage. And the manufacturing is a smaller requirement. But the combination of, you know, fairly restrictive floor ratio, wide frontage requirements, you know, mimoft size, makes it sort of difficult to do, to be efficient with your land. So yeah, if you're a car dealership, you know, it makes sense. You go out there and you take up a lot of land. But if the car dealership wants to redevelop or sell the property, the, under the current dimensional requirements for highway business, they would be fairly limited, maybe really limited under limited manufacturing. So what we're trying to do with the new regulations is to make it not so much based on general requirements, but really about, you know, what's the, what's the particular use? How much parking do they need? What other precautions do we have to take in terms of buffering behind the properties if they are abutting a residential district? How do we provide internal access and internal circulation? So really focus more on, you know, the quality of the development rather than the general dimensional standards. There is actually allowed some residential development at a density of 16 units per acre in the Highway Business District. But that's, that, I'm not even sure has been ever used. Something that, you know, clearly we want to, we want to make part of the future in certain areas by special permit. But, you know, by and large, there's really not much in terms of residential on the four-mile corridor. In terms of parking standards, if you look at all of the current requirements in the zoning bylaws compared to the most recent Institute of Transportation Traffic Engineers standards, we are above in just about every category that we have in terms of requirements. So the fourth part of the plan is to look at the future and sort of, you know, conceptualize and illustrate what could happen over, say, the next 30 years. So we did this drawing, this is what we were supposed to share at the public workshop, you know, go over the ideas and have our, you know, have the public give us some feedback on what they liked and what they didn't like. So hopefully, some, someone on the ride will have an opportunity to do that workshop and share the overall ideas with the community. But basically, we went from one end to the other and sort of drew out, you know, those areas where there could be some redevelopment, strategic redevelopment, potentially some mixed-use redevelopments. Other areas where there might be more open space or preserved open space as well as certain enhancements such as trails and, you know, pocket parks and that sort of stuff. And then also streetscape improvements up and down the Route One corridor itself. So if you look at the, you know, the whole plan, you know, the whole four-mile stretch, and really put together a lot of ideas for not only, you know, redevelopment and reinvestment in the corridor, but also how we can tie in the corridor to some of the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of pedestrian connections, providing some mixed use and walking distance to some of these established neighborhoods. And then, you know, up and down the corridor, making better connections in terms of, you know, and more attractive in terms of streetscape improvements and extended sidewalks. So this on the left here is just one example of what we're calling a potential mixed-use node. So this is the Everett Streets, University Ave intersection on the north end, the Westwood Line. And basically, we're showing that in 30 years, there could be a lot of redevelopment around that intersection. And a lot of, the corner there is up for sale, and they own a large piece of land there. And, you know, over time, there could be some, you know, a little bit of residential with commercial restaurants and retail as well as R and D and other technical, technical types of uses. Maybe a good opportunity for that. And also, it would tie in with a lot of the residential that is on the west side of the corridor between Ellis Avenue and Everett Street. So those people would feed into this new sort of center where there's, you know, services and shops and restaurants for them, but not major employment center at the same time. So we did this also with the other themes, you know, transportation and mobility, identifying, you know, things that are on the Complete Streets project list as well as other transportation improvements that could be made up in transportation improvements that could be made up and down the corridor as well as extending out into the neighborhoods and making better connections between the corridor and one. And then we also did the same with conservation recreation. You can see there on the right side of the diagram a number of properties that are identified for future enhancements. Well, they're existing open spaces, whether the public or private, but also combined with potential future improvements. So so the, the, the final piece of section four is coming up with some ideas for branding and some, and wayfinding. So if you look on the left side, you know, having some kind of sort of entrance enhancements, you know, sort of, you know, gateway treatments on the north end at, at the Westwood Line. Things like, like the wayfinding directional signs, maybe a pocket park, maybe some sort of theme that goes along with the history of the automobile, you know, antique cars or some sort of, you know, monuments that basically say, welcome to, to Norwood and make positive impression on people as they're going up and down the corridor. Right now, our, our, our gateways on both the north and west, north and south side are McDonald's. And while they're real McDonald's, they're fairly nice-looking McDonald's. We're, we're hoping for something that's more sort of appealing to the general public in terms of wayfinding and gateway treatments. If you look at the map on the right, this identifies the, the potential location for types of branding and marketing and gateway improvements, including something at all of the different car dealerships, some sort of identity branding that could be shared between the different dealerships. So I'm just sort of playing with some ideas. You know, the upper left-hand corner is Good Old Ernie Bach Senior. Come on down by sort of the, what I'm sort of calling the reflections and directions of the automobile. Reflecting on the, the history and the past, but also looking forward into you know, the, the newest technologies in automobiles and in transportation. And then doing some things to, you know, make, you know, make more, more recognizable on the corridor, maybe some sort of signage on the, on the bridge and the overpass. We could do some, some nice landscaping and some monuments and signage on the, on the exit ramps. This one leading over to this, the circle, Pendergrass Circle and toward the downtown. The little right is looking at opportunities, this one at the, the Plaza, the Monkey Sports Plaza that brings space in front. You know, that could be a nice sort of gathering space where it could be sort of outdiced, outdoor seating in a pocket park. And maybe taking advantage of the, the brick that passes that. It goes under the, the, the corridor into the deposit river. So again, just sort of brainstorming with some ideas. There's some good monument signs in Norwood, you know, that you've seen on, on the left here. The Subaru sign is nice, the new, the new Vanderbilt sign is nice. And those types of monument signs are, are great because they're very visible for the driver as well as the pedestrian. They look high-quality. And you can put them out close to the corridor. So I think that this sort of creates, you know, attractiveness, you know, they're more appealing than some of these large and tall ground signs that are on, that you see up and down the corridor. This would be a good sort of nice option to have out there. And we do have some, some, some nice ones as well. On the right side, upper right side, looking at just some ideas. Again, the theme of reflections and directions with the old pickup truck and the new pickup truck. Branding logo, you know, type building for the automobile. And then down below, you know, these are pistons actually that I had my daughters sort of Photoshop and put, make into a, a planters. And these could be icons that you could place at each of the dealerships on the corridor and just sort of create sort of a, you know, a nice sort of wayfinding system for the automobile dealerships, but make it attractive and interesting at the same time. So that's part of the, the section four is to look at each property, look at each property and identified, you know, the current conditions in terms of their frontage on the corridor, the types of businesses, the streetscapes, the building design and placement, parking and access and current signage, and then made recommendations for all of the properties. So there's a hundred and twenty-one altogether that are directly on the corridor that we assessed for existing conditions as well as preliminary recommendations for improvements in the future. So finally, that the last part of this is actually the zoning itself is to put together a a comprehensive outline followed by, you know, a bidding process and then refinement into a final bylaw for town meeting. So the, the initial, you know, the, the idea that we're thinking about is basically taking parts of the highway business, manufacturing, limited manufacturing on the corridor and take that zoning and turn it into what we're calling the Blue Star Highway Mixed Use District. So that we have a, you know, consistent, you know, standard and zoning district from one end of the corridor to the other. And then at key intersections, we would allow by special permit some mixed use and some residential development. And this is something that we could identify as sort of the, the frontages along that, those particular intersections, or we could use the mixed-use overlay district, or at least parts of it anyways, to handle future residential and mixed-use development. And, you know, all the major intersections and some smaller intersections. Now, you know, clearly this is pretty ambitious and we were probably in a cutting things back quite a bit. But at this point, we're looking at potential mixed-use nodes and districts, overlay districts at Everett Street University, Ellis Avenue, Pleasant Street, Access Road, Dean, Vanderbilt, Morris, Sumner, and maybe even, you know, part of Bridge, River Ridge Drive. We are, you know, putting together some amendments for the table of use. And we're focusing on the table of use of the broad, you know, broad range of uses. Some of it by rights, some of it by special permit. But the focus is really on using those, the lot frontages on the corridor primarily for retail, restaurant and other publicly oriented commercial uses. You know, we don't want storage facilities and other, other types of uses that don't depend on the visibility for customer services for, for building, you know, building businesses. So we're going to leave that opportunity primarily to those people that are counting on the traffic flow and counting on the visibility to be successful businesses. We also want to allow, as I said, mixed use in designated locations by special permit from the planning board. And then we want to have some specific performance standards for certain types of uses that could potentially have a negative impact on the corridors, such as the auto storage lots. In terms of the dimensional standards, we would basically reduce the minimum lot size to ten thousand square feet for the new Blue Star Highway Mixed Use District, reduce the furniture to a hundred. We would eliminate the floor ratio and keep all the other dimensions pretty much intact. But again, the, the, the idea here is that really not concerned too much about floor ratio. We're more concerned about the height of the buildings in proximity to the, to the corridor. So if it's a really tall building, let's say it's a full sixty feet, maybe it would be set back a little bit further than a building that was two stories. So it's those types of things that we're looking at. We want to make sure that most of the prop, the parking is behind the building. We like the building, bring the building up as much as we can with, you know, allowing some parking in front of it. But most should be on the side and to the rear. We want to encourage shared access. We want to encourage less curb cuts. We want to encourage internal access and shared parking. So all these things would be part of the dimensional standards where we make them fairly straightforward and, and, and flexible, but at the same time, you know, create incentives to do, you know, good, good development and, and, and focus on some of the bigger things in terms of creating incentives for reinvestment as well as, you know, utilizing our properties more efficiently. Parking, you might remember that we, we put together a mixed-use, the mixed-use overlay district bylaw last, last year. And that includes some good parking standards and opportunities to reduce parking where the demand is, is, is need as much as, as, you know, the standards that are on the book. And also allow some flexibility in terms of different types of parking, such as tandem parking and parking structures. So that's all in place, as we would probably connect to that part of the M U O D standards as part of this new bylaw. Signage, we want to encourage more monument signs and the, the, the ground signs, the taller they are, the further back they should be from the corridor, the business signs, the wall signs are pretty good, I think, as we do out there. We do hear a little bit about the need to control electronic message boards. So that'll be part of the, the amendments. And not to allow future billboards. In terms of buffers, you know, again, the focus there obviously is on the adjacent residential, some parts of the corridor. The, the furnished properties are really narrow. So we have to be really careful about impacts it has on the, on the adjacent neighborhoods behind them. And so that's something that would be, you know, a focus. Landscaping, the primary focus with landscaping is really on the, the streetscape, the, the appearance from from Route One as you're driving or walking. So if we made it a fifteen or twenty-foot streetscape area, we would want to make sure that there would be good street trees that are cool and proper so that people can see underneath them the businesses beyond them. We want to make sure that there's sidewalks because I don't think the state is going to be putting any sidewalks on Route One anytime soon. So it's really going to be kind of up to property owners as redevelopment occurs. And then other, you know, other landscaping on the front streetscape area would be a sort of low-line landscaping, you know, grasses and, and ground covers. We don't want to create berms or anything that, that prevents visibility of the businesses. In terms of environmental protections, we would be looking at adding some additional standards for sustainability, things like previous pavers, landscaping that bio swells and other things that absorb stormwater and treat it on-site. As well as energy-efficient types of applications to the buildings. Vehicle storage facilities, looking at limiting stored cars to dealerships in Norwood, not allowing outside vehicles to be parked here. Having design standards for parking structures and trying to create incentives for property owners, dealerships to work together to structure their parking and place them in an area of or nearby that doesn't have a major impact on traffic and also preserves land along the corridor for other uses. We understand that, you know, dealership parking or, or storage parking is really necessary. But there's got to be better ways than putting it directly on the corridor and wasting an opportunity for other types of developments, but not impacting neighborhoods surrounding the Route One corridor. So this is something we're starting to put together now in terms of, you know, appropriate locations and then certain development standards to make sure that they're done properly. Again, we talked about the transitional buffer zones between the commercial district and the residential districts. Other general standards that are in the mixed-use overlay district today that we could probably utilize in terms of having multiple buildings, building placements, building height in the setback and step-back standards. And then working in new density standards for the district. And that's something now obviously need to have a lot of discussion about, you know, where it's appropriate and at what levels of density would it be acceptable? So we're just starting to put together some preliminary ideas for that. And a lot of that would be in affordability requirements for new housing, a certain percentage of it, parking requirements, and possibly a Route One overlay, a transportation overlay district, management overlay district, which would, if, you know, for large-scale developments, possibly couple that with certain types of transportation and mobility improvements. You know, sort of like a, like a local shuffle shuttle service between businesses up and down the corridor, like they're doing over at Westwood at University, or other types of improvements that allow people to get in and around the corridor easily. So that's it for the slides. Questions?
On the height of buildings there, are we somewhat limited? If they're near the airport, I take it that we are. Wondering how high we could actually perceive these things to be.
Well, right now it's sixty. I, I hadn't, I, I, I was going to keep it at sixty because we obviously we have to have a discussion on all of that. But you're right, you're, the, the, the the zone on the airport is fairly limiting on that side of the highway. So, you know, if, if we need taller buildings, I think that we really come down to whether or not it can meet that navigation requirement. But also is it a situation where if it's eighty feet, it's for like an R and D or a, a, a bio lab or something like that, whether or not it fits in with the rest of the corridor. So we could add it up to sixty feet like it is today and then look at, you know, under certain conditions, allowing it to go taller if necessary.
Do you know how tall, the tallest building is there now and what it would be?
Tallest building on the corridor now? I don't think there's any really tall buildings on the corridor.
Hampton Inn possibly.
Yeah, it's probably the Hampton Inn. Yeah, you're right. It's one of the hotels, but I, probably the Hampton Inn. Which is actually, you know, you know, pretty close to the airport. But I think that what happens is, you know, on the, on the runway, at the end of the runway is where it really fans out the, the navigation easement. So if you're on the side, it typically is not as stringent as it is at the end, either end of the, of the runway.
Mr. Halkyotis, any comments on your review here?
No, I want to thank Ted for doing a thorough presentation. He threw a lot of information at us. And I think that what we'd like to do is take his presentation and send it out to the board members so that you have time to read it and reread it and get a better understanding. The, you know, the, the, the pandemic has caused us to push back the town meeting zoning articles to the fall. But I don't want to kind of fall behind just because we have a little more time. Ted mentioned the public meetings that we had planned to have to get input. And we need to do that. We need to schedule that and invite the stakeholders and try to get the word out and advertise the meeting. And holding a big public meeting in this kind of format is going to be challenging. And it's going to be challenging to, to provide opportunities for people to speak in, in, in a meaningful way when we're dealing, dealing with the go-to-meeting kind of format. I'm hoping that, you know, as the summer goes on, we'll be in a better position to do that. But I think I've got to sit down with Ted, do a schedule from here to October when town meeting will likely take place and schedule out these meetings. We also need to have a similar briefing meeting with the Selectmen and the Economic Development Committee to bring them in on this and get their input before we, we go to the final rezoning article. So we have a lot of work to do on this and, and I think we need to focus on it this summer so that we're in a position this fall to be ready to go to town meeting and be able to answer questions and vet this with, with all the stakeholders and with town meeting members.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll be real quick because I know we have another, just a couple of quick comments and I'll get with Paul. I was very interested in slide number two, the tax, the tax impacts that the auto dealerships have. I'd like to get some, you know, I'll sit down with Paul at some point and go over that. I won't tie up, but that was interesting that the, for the amount of land and businesses. But that was interesting that the, for the amount of land and businesses, the I need, just need to explain to me that, you know, we're not getting a lot of taxes there. I am surprised, surprisingly, that the MB, MBTA doesn't run a bust on Route One with all the businesses on Route One, all the way down the line, that, that they don't run a line down Route One. You know, that have periodic stops for all the people that work on Route One. Sixteen eight, sixteen units per acre is just not going to cut it in Route One. I think we all know that. And Ted, just a quick, I don't know if you have anything, I, I kind of look at Route One in Saugus. And I know that we're not Saugus and that is a very dense Route One corridor, but we are too. And I was just curious if you had any idea in, in your business travels of, of how they're set up up there. I'd be interested what kind of setup, because they have a lot of different uses as well. Hotels, restaurants, dealerships, other things. So that, now those are my comments and, and like I said, I can get with Paul and Pat on some of the other ones and, and because I know we're short on time. Thank you.
Yep. Well, Saugus has got higher density, mixed use, and they just now they allow denser development in general up there, same with Lynn. Lynn's got mixed use. And if you go further up, you go like Route One in, in, in Portsmouth, they just introduced mixed use and higher, had higher density development in general on their Route One corridor as well. So that's really the difference. We really have more of a suburban standard, zoning standards for the Route One quarter out here compared to a lot of other segments of Route One. And certainly more so than the one twenty eight corridor, which has really changed a lot in the last ten or so years.
Thank you, Ted.
Yep.
Anyone else? Go.
No.
Dan? Anything you'd like to ask, ask at this time? You're muted, Dan.
Is that Brian?
Right. You, you're muted, Brian. We'll get back to you later. Rob, anything?
I just, I can tell there's a lot of work involved in this already. And I look forward to working in the future, taking a closer look with everything.
Now that I found my it's, looks like a great, a very interesting piece of work and I, I look forward to going through it. There's lots of, lots to digest.
Thank you.
Yeah, so then, you know, half an hour presentation when you're, when you're just starting to see this stuff for the first time. But I wanted to sort of summarize as best I could what, what's been done so far. There has been a lot of work and I think when you read the report, you know, it'll be sort of an eye opener. A lot of interesting things there that I didn't know when I started the project. So I, I think it's got great potential that the corridor. We just, and we got a good framework in place with the mixed use overlay district in terms of introducing it potentially to the corridor. But, you know, obviously, you know, we get a long way to go in terms of getting it prepared for the town meeting.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One of the, the things that Ted presented was the concept of allowing mixed use development in, on the major crossroads in the corridor. University Ave, Everett Street to the north, Sumner Street to the south, Dean Street. And so that, what we're talking about is allowing, allowing for some housing, for some condominiums and some apartments. And as we all know, apartments and condominiums are controversial in town. And I wanted to bring that to the board's attention, make sure everyone's clear and on the same page that that's part of what we're discussing now and, and we're at this point planning to go forward with, with recommending. And I wanted to see what the board thought about that. We don't want to get this, let this go too far if that's something that the board is not supportive of. So I wanted to throw that out for discussion before we let Ted wind up.
Thank you. Any comments at this time from anyone that would like to jump in? Mr. Chairman?
I just, I, I'm having a difficult time trying to picture where apartments and condos would go on Route One. It's, it's so commercial and it's retail, it's, it's a mix of everything. But when it comes to housing, it does, doesn't seem to, I don't know if there's many spots where that would take hold.
I think it's pretty limited where it would take hold. I, I think that, you know, on the north side, university with the analog property being open, such a big property that you could probably tuck some in there, not directly on the corridor, but further deep, deeper into the property. I mean, I think, like I said before, I think the, the corridor itself has to be preserved for a commercial that really counts on the visibility. But behind that, it can be part of a, a mixed use project where there is some more residential developments that is, is sort of oriented away from the corridor. I think like Monkey Springs could be a good one. That's, you know, that's between a well established neighborhood and, and the commercial that's on the corridor with the pharmacy down there off the ramp. And at the same time, it's on a small block that goes under the, under the corridor, which ties it into Ponce. So that seems to be, you know, very underutilized property. And the opportunity there to do mixed use might encourage more reinvestment in it. So again, I'm
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Patrick Kowski?
I would most certainly want to see this as part of the study.
It's going to happen everywhere along these nodes.
Okay, I would most certainly want to see housing as part of the study. I think that if you, if it's done right and done smartly, it, it, it can work there. So I would like to see it, not necessarily has to, you know, be a huge project, but I most certainly would like to see it part of the study. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for examples of this kind of thing on a similar commercial corridor, take a, take a drive on Route Nine West and you'll see various types of development, commercial and residential mixed in. So this isn't really unusual and, and it, it is the trend where as suburbanization has consumed the majority of the land for single family homes, we're seeing smart growth dictate denser, tighter development patterns in areas that have existing infrastructure to accommodate that growth. And so this, this concept does kind of fit in with, with a lot of the trending development in terms of smart growth.
And it also generates more revenue to the town than open parking lots for auto dealers.
Yeah. I, I mean, this is a pretty common situation in a lot of communities, suburban communities where, you know, you, you all your major corridors, you zone for commercial and manufacturing. And the towns just can't sustain that much of that type of use. By the same time, they provide an opportunity for mixed use, for reinvestment in some of these properties. I mean, you've got a number of old shopping centers up and down the corridor that have been sort of, you know, leapfrogged by newer developments. And so the future of those properties, let's say Ocean State and Staples Plaza. You know, it's really, you know, it, it, it's not realistic to think that that's probably going to be another, you know, you know, new shopping center as it is today. But I mean, if it could provide some commercial along the corridor and create a transition with residential behind it where it abuts local neighborhoods, that might be a win-win where the developer, the property owner has a realistic opportunity for redeveloping it where he can, he can make some money off of, but it also creates better tax revenue for the town and provides some housing that is needed for, you know, younger people as well as older people.
Thanks, Ted. Anyone else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Rob.
Does anyone know the last time this quarter was really looked at like this?
I don't know.
Rob, I don't think it's ever been looked in a comprehensive way that, that Ted's looked at it. And, and you can see that a, a lot of analysis of the existing conditions took place before he got to the discussion about what could happen in the future use or rezoning. What we didn't tell you is that there's another staff member in town, Joe Collins, who works for Tony. He's a budget management analyst. And Joe undertook a separate study of the Route One corridor on his own. And he was focusing predominantly on looking at how much revenue the corridor generates and, and really dug into the numbers. And he provided some of the data that Ted presented tonight in his report. So it really has gotten an analysis from two different, you know, from a staff person in town that, that's got economic development background and, and really drilled into what was happening in the corridor. And Ted's looked at it. So we've never had a, a serious comprehensive review of what goes on here. Nobody's ever really done what Ted did to look at the zoning and to say, well, look at, if you compare the three different zones, highway business, limited manufacturing and manufacturing, look at the minimum lot sizes, look at the frontages for each district. They were all so very different. And, and it's created this thing of, of these variances out there over the years that car dealers had to get to allow those uses and some strange special permit conditions to allow for what's there now. And really what we wanted to do is to try to provide some consistency along that whole corridor. And we're hoping that creating this new blue star highway district will, will help to bring that consistency and will guide future development to be more uniform and consistent with what the town's going to want to see in the future.
Thank you. Okay, we've been around the horn. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add tonight?
I just got a quick question.
Yes.
When can that presentation be available online?
So we just received the, the presentation this afternoon, Jeff. It's up to the board on how they want to handle it. We, we can, I could email that to Jeff tomorrow. If the board wants to take a look at it before you release that information, I, I think that's certainly within your purview.
I'd like to take a look at it in more detail and happy to share it with them after that. You can follow up on that, Paul, please.
So what we could do is, is give the board time between now and the next meeting, which is scheduled for the twenty ninth. And the board could discuss the, the information and make a decision at that meeting whether or not they're want to release it to the public.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good here.
All right. So, so Jeff, it sounds like you're going to need to wait a couple of weeks.
No problem. This, this planning board coverage article will be just as general as possible to get the idea across.
Okay. 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 Do we want to cover the department updates and other business before we go into executive session? Or do we want to do executive shift, except, yeah, executive session and come back for that? Paul, what would you like to do?
It's, it's up to the board. There is some information on Forbes Hill that I think the board would be interested in learning about. If you want to do that.
See you guys later.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you all.
Very nice.
Bye-bye.
Paul, I see, or Mr. Chairman, I see that Attorney Deluca is online. So if we want to do executive session, well, you know, it's up to the rest of the board, but Attorney Deluca is, I see him online. So maybe we could do that so he doesn't have to sit through everything else.
Very good. Yep. I don't have a problem with that. Okay, all in, all in favor? Mr. Hatch.
Yes.
Mr. Shan?
Yes.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bamba?
Hi.
And the chairman says aye. We're good, five zero. Patrick, you want to put us back on our recording or just keep rolling? Counselor, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you all again. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Updates and other business.
Mr. Chairman, we had a bid opening for the Forbes Hill property today.
For which front, Forbes Hill?
Yep.
And the winner is?
And if I can find my notes. So at eleven o'clock, there was a public bid opening. It was a go to meeting just like this. The town received four bids, three of which were received at like eight o'clock this morning. The first bid was submitted by Michael Agiros, the man that, that owns the Wendy's and BJ's property and owns the Cadillac dealership. Mr. Agiros bid thirteen million, two hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. The second bid was from Polty Homes. They bid the minimum bid price of thirteen million. The third bid was from our friend, Dr. Feliz. He bid the minimum bid price of thirteen million. And the fourth bid was from a, a company called Continental. They are home builders, multifamily apartment condominium builders. They bid thirteen million, five hundred and fifteen thousand. So they are the high bidder at thirteen million, five hundred and fifteen thousand. It's over half a million dollars more than the minimum bid price. I, I need to note that Continental's bid came with an addendum and I, I didn't get a chance to read it today. And we've asked town council to review the addendum. They may have been asking for things that would not be allowed or the town might not agree to. So at this point, you know, it's not a done deal. We're going to look at what additional information they, they supplied and what they requested and evaluate that bid. There is a chance that, that we might hit an impasse and we'd have to go to the second bidder, but at this point it's, it's premature. The good news is that, you know, the, the high bid is half a million more than the asking price. And given what's transpired over the last year, where unfortunately Dr. Feliz was unable to meet his commitment to purchase the property and get financing. The, the series of extensions brought in more revenue to the town for, for basically holding it open for Dr. Feliz. So we're hoping that the town might still be able to come out of this hole and not lose money on it. But it's still a little premature. These were just pure bid prices. There were no, as, as part of this process, there were no proposals submitted. And we don't know what the plans are would, that would be from these developers. But the good news is we got a couple of good solid bids and it looks like the town will be able to recoup the majority, if not all, of the money that they've spent on it.
What was the original price from Doctor, I'm sorry, I don't remember his last name?
Who? Dr. Feliz bid the thirteen million last time, a year ago.
Same price, just a couple hundred bucks, a couple thousand more. Thank you. Okay, thank you for that update.
The other thing I wanted to brief the board on was over the last week, the general manager has created a grant program to assist small businesses that have been impacted from the economic fallout of the pandemic. Last Wednesday, Tony told me to check out what the town of Acton was doing. Acton had created their own small business assistance grant program. And we took a look at what Acton did. Tony, it looked like a good grant program. Tony really liked it. And he recommended to the board of selectmen that they approve the grant program. So within like two or three days, the program was approved. And the grant announcements went out and we have already received, I think, half a dozen, Pat, something. We received some later today. We've received a number of grant applications already. The grant program is going to be funded this first phase by $750,000 that the town received in 2015 in connection with approving the zoning for the Plimpedon, not the Plimpedon, the Regal Press Smart Growth Overweight District. Under the 40-hour program that the state has, it does provide incentives for communities to increase the density of development and it compensates the communities for doing that. And so there was this initial $75,000 payment made to the town years ago to compensate for approving the zoning. And that actually took place before I started working for the town. And then after the project was completed, the town was eligible for $120,000 density bonus payment. We are waiting for that money. We've done all the paperwork to get that 120,000. And we were told that the state would be wiring it into the town this week. So that money comes with different restrictions that can only be, the money can only be used on capital type projects. There are additional funds that the planning department has that were monies that we received in connection with the Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehab Abilitation Program. And this program, as some of you might know, for many years, my predecessor, Steve Costello, ran these grant programs to try to provide loans to income qualified people to make improvements to their house to bring it up to code. Those people that receive those loans, if they repay those loans prior to the end of the 15-year term, the town gets to keep that money as program income. We have, over the years, collected quite a bit of program income. And the federal government HUD and the DHCD have certain restrictions on how different types of money from this program can be developed. They changed the rules in 2017. So there is about 68,000 in program income that we would like to use for a second phase of this grant program. However, in order to do that, we have to engage in the bureaucracy of the Community Development Block Grant Program, which requires holding a public hearing, reopening a grant with them, demonstrating that the grant program will meet the national objectives of the federal government of HUD. That's a whole process that I really don't want to engage in at this point in time. I'm committed to this year, get the Route One rezoning done. And as it is, Pat and I have really kind of pivoted and changed direction on what we've been doing since the COVID crisis started. And the majority of our work has focused on economic development work. We have worked hard to gather information about the various state and federal programs, monies that are available through the CARES Act, the Paycheck Protection Program. And we've tried to distill that information down and post it up on the town's website to provide guidance to our businesses that are struggling. We have spent most of our time over the last few months working on that stuff. And it's pulled me away from the Route One Corridor study. At this point in time, I'm backed up. I've got reports that Ted has given me to review. And I haven't had a chance to do it. And this grant program really kind of caught me off guard. I talked to Tony about it. I said, yeah, it looks like a good grant program. And two days later, the selectman voted to approve it and the planning department's in charge of it. So we only have the 75,000 right now in hand, but there's additional funding that we would like to utilize. And if there's ever a rainy day to spend money that's been building up over the years for helping out our local businesses, now is the time. But I'm caught in a struggle between finishing up on work that we've already started, grants that we've already, I have several other grants that we're already in the middle of, the Vanderbilt Grant, other grants that we've applied for. And going beyond this first phase is going to be difficult for me to juggle, for Pat and I to juggle, applying for different grant funds beyond what we have now. Additional grants have been rolling out by the week. And in the last two weeks, we found two other grant programs that would help to provide funds to reimburse restaurant owners for like buying the outdoor furniture they needed to set up for outdoor seating. And so we'd like to be able to apply for those grants and help our businesses with that work. But I have to be cognizant of the other work that we're already committed to doing and to be able to deliver on the Route One Corridor study at the Fall Town Meeting. So I wanted to give the board a briefing on what's going on with one grant program that was just opened up. And we're accepting grant applications for now from small businesses. For anybody that might be watching this at home later, information on this grant program is available at the planning department's website. And Mr. DeShanes and I are available to answer any questions. But we've really changed a lot of what we've been doing over the last few months since the economic crisis has unfolded caused by the pandemic.
Thank you, Paul. Well, the money referred to that is in addition to the 75,000. There's no time limit for applying for that for grants, is there? So we don't have to, we don't have the clock running on that?
There's no time limit and we could use that at any given time. There's a couple of pools of the Community Development Block Grant money. Some of it's called miscellaneous income and that can be spent more at the town's discretion. And then in order to access that program income, that's where we have to engage in the bureaucracy of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And then the other 120,000 that we should be receiving from the state this week, that money can be spent, but it's supposed to be spent on capital type purchases. And so that's up to the general manager and the GPW director, I guess, on what kind of capital projects they might want to spend that 120,000 on.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Paul?
Just, Mr. Chairman. Yep, Paul, just a random question. Under the Community Preservation Act, there's a component for housing. And that's always like usually the hardest one to spend. Is there any way that that money could be used as part of a town grant program for people who having a problem paying rent or mortgage? Or is that, is that not, would not be allowed under that program?
So the answer is yes. And cities that are CPA communities have been able to access that because a city council has the authority to vote on budget items. In towns, as you know, town meeting has to approve any expenditure from the community preservation funds. So the cities are more nimble and they, you know, they can do things much quicker than towns are that have a town meeting form of government, where our only chance to get something like that approved comes around twice a year. As you know, we have the annual town meeting scheduled for the 22nd for next week. And the decision came down to not do our zoning articles, to only do essential articles to keep government going. So there is a community preservation article, which is the standard annual article to take the block of money and to place portions of that into the buckets for each different interests that money, that community preservation funds can be spent on. So that article is part of the annual and that will hopefully be approved next week. But unfortunately, we don't have that opportunity to use housing funds for those purposes because we need a town meeting vote and the decision was made not to do any of those types of articles at this annual town meeting.
Mr. Sheen? Any questions?
No further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Bamber?
No, no further questions here.
Okay. Mr. Halkiotis, if you'd like to continue with your update?
So I think, I think Pat and I gave you copies of that grant program. So you can, it doesn't take very long to go through it, but you can get a flavor for what it's all about. And we're hoping that we'll be able to give those grants out to some businesses that need it. We started to, as they've come in, we've started to read some of the grant applications. And it really, it confirms what we already know. It's a really sad story unfolding in this whole country for our small businesses that are really struggling. And so, you know, the grant applications require them to document their loss of income. And the main requirement for being eligible for a grant is that they have to document a loss of at least 50% of their business from last year to this year. And so in reading what's going on with some of our favorite business establishments in town, they are hurting. And so it'll feel good to be able to provide some relief to them. But the maximum amount for these grants are $4,000. To kind of follow up on Ernie's housing question. Part of the CARES Act money that HUD sent to the state that the Department of Housing and Economic Development is in charge of administering, half of that money that the DHCD said would go towards creating a micro enterprise grant fund. And the other half of the money would go towards helping people that were making housing payments, whether they were mortgage, rent, or utility payments. We are in the process of trying to apply for a grant for the housing end. And from what I understand, that I learned this afternoon from talking to our representatives at DHCD, DHCD has not provided that agency that's going to manage the housing funds with any detail of how it's going to work yet. And so we've been trying to get that agency to enter into an agreement with us to be it for North residents to be able to apply for housing assistance. But the state has been slow to get that guidance out to those agencies that are going to be managing the grant funds. So we will hopefully be able to provide some grant opportunities for our residents that are income eligible, that are struggling to make housing payments. And we have already applied, along with 22 other communities, for micro enterprise grants for businesses of five people or less that are struggling. And so that grant application went in on Friday. And we think it'll probably take DHCD, you know, about a month to go through evaluating those grant applications. We applied for 200,000 in grant funds for that. And if we're successful in even getting half of that, we would be able to add 100,000, say, to the 75,000 that we have going for this grant program that we just discussed. So I'm confident that we, you know, we're going to be able to bring home some grant funds to our local businesses that are suffering from the impacts of the economic crisis.
And those applications, Paul, can be picked up at your office?
Town hall is closed. They're available electronically at the planning department's webpage.
Thank you. Okay. Next subject?
That's about all I have. I can tell you that we've been very busy and sidetracked. So I have not had a chance to contact the people that were interested in the associate board member position. We were dealing with juggling priorities last week and I haven't gotten to that yet, but we will get to them. I'll reach out to those that the board talked to when interviewed about six or eight months ago. And I'll get back to you at the next meeting with a report for what we can do moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Other than that, I don't have anything else to report. We'll see if Pat has anything.
I'll just go into a dimension that General Manager Mizuko's program was Central on Green or sent, the closing of Central Street. So there is a portion of Central Street from East Cottage to Nahann. As I'm sure most of you have noticed, we've got our, a lot of our restaurants are starting to utilize outdoor seating as an option. Lewis's, Limy's, you know, just to name a few. So one option we're looking into doing is creating kind of a communal seating area. And, you know, Tony Mizuko has been really big on to trying to utilize this space in particular just because of its proximity to the downtown as well as the common. So it's an option. I think we're trying to hopefully look into doing it this week. If not, at least by, you know, in the weekends of July and August. It'd be a temporary measure, only, you know, during the summer months, only from Friday to Sunday. And it would just be an additional option for if you were, you know, going out to wherever, grabbing, grab something to eat and you want to go sit outside, it's nice out, you can, you know, utilize that as a seating option, which is, you know, it's a, it's a kind of a new measure. And you see it in better times in different city, in like cities or areas where they'll close the street for a certain purpose. So it's a, it'll be a good kind of trial to go and use it during this summer when, you know, we need it for, you know, more of an emergency situation, more of a purpose of adding additional seating that can benefit our restaurants. But, you know, hopefully it has well received and we can bring it back next year with more of a, a community initiative and a way of creating place and trying to bring people to downtown. And that's, you know, it's a great opportunity to try to, you know, help out our businesses. But at the same time, you know, see if we can bring something like this and make it more of a, a permanent fixture in the future. So that's about it. And again, that's a, it's a section of Central Street from East Cottage to Nahann. And that would be just weekends in the summer.
Mr. Bamber, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, the, the capital improvement money grants, would we be able to use that money to say buy, say picnic tables for that Central Street or some sort of help them furnish the place?
So we actually, there's two other grants going on right now. One through Mast D O T. And what was the other one, Paul? It was through the Bar Foundation and NAPC. So basically, there's two other grant opportunities right now that are primarily geared towards capital purchases such as that getting, I think it's called like street, open streets or some sort of program through Mast D O T. And so we're looking into that right now in, you know, different measures, whether we use that for costs such as temporary jersey barriers, string lights, seating chairs. There's a different idea of doing what's called a parklet. You'll see them in like cities where it'll be an extension of the sidewalk, basically. You know, you utilize on-street parking, one or two spaces. It would be kind of like a wooden metal structure where it's, it will be flush with the sidewalk. It'll kind of be that extension and it can allow for additional seating. But it's more of a, it's aesthetically pleasing as well as kind of safer for patrons. And so that's kind of a unique idea. And so there's a few companies throughout the country, they make prefabricated versions of parklets. So it's a few different ideas we're kind of looking into applying with, with one of those, those grant opportunities. But yeah, so I guess to answer your question, yeah, that there's, there's grant options out there to help purchase almost this equipment. So that's the way we want to go, try to utilize the grants to purchase it.
Okay. Mr. Sheen, anything else?
Uh, no, not at this time.
The Hatchey?
Nothing.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Nothing.
Mr. Bamber?
Uh, nothing at this time.
So with that being said, and Paul, you've got everything you've wanted covered, correct? Be a good opportunity here for maybe a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Hatchey on an oral walk around.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
And the chairman votes aye. Thank you very much, everyone.